Plaid through the board, please.
Well, we have the weed issue to discuss and decide on. We have the health issue, a health insurance issue, three choices to decide on. We have juvenile detention, two choices to decide on that we discussed. Liability insurance to commit to on the 30th. Senior meals on the stove. Probably on the 30th, I would imagine those two should be, always should be on the agenda. And then the floating mills, set the floating mills, determine the floating mills. So...
We got it through the sheriff's budget, there was, we haven't come to a conclusion here with her, so...
We haven't come to a conclusion for any of the list. We have to come to a conclusion on all of those.
But we're on that list, too.
Yes, yes, and that's establishing and determining the floating mills.
Do you want to come back after lunch, or do you want to?
I'm okay to plow through. I'm okay to recess until after lunch, whatever is your pleasures. I don't have a preference.
Okay, we got an hour to go for the next meeting, I guess.
You know, I don't know, I'm, I'm kind of inclined to just stay here and walk it through. You guys are already here. I see it as a waste of your time if you want to come back to do so after a couple hours. Scott, you can't get in the field and do much in two hours. Dana, you can't get on the road and do much in two hours and come back. So, I guess, it's not even noon yet. These are not tough questions. I would suggest we plow through.
Aye.
But... So, I guess, starting with weed. This is, this is allowed by the Supreme Court. This is allowed by the CBA. It's negotiated. And this is requested by his board, and he's got the money to pay for it. So, if you want to be there.
I will come forward if you want on this.
Okay.
If you have any suggestions, feel free to ask, you know. What I'll say is, is on the market adjustment towards the 1750, what was asked of me is, is to go ahead and call counties similar in size and stature as a Broadwater County Weed Department. There were multiple factors taken into consideration when doing this research. But the two priorities went forward, you know, the county's population and the statistics, and trying to find a program that was even close to equivalency and what their wages were. Just to kind of give you a little background, this is not a new request either. This has been going on for two years.
What's your pleasure?
We, we lost Pam because she moved to make $2 more an hour. We know from last year when we went through the hiring, it takes time and money to go through the process. Debbie works up questions. How many hours did we spend on county attorney alone, much less supervisor for weed and solid waste? It is a long, expensive process. It also, it takes an employee, a new employee, it takes you a year to pay for hiring a new employee. And that year is spent learning the county, learning the job, learning the characters involved. The audit, again, I can go get it, but Tom Hayes took a paragraph and talked about the fact that Broadwater County is underpaying their employees. Market adjustments is something we're going to have to be looking at for a variety of our employees. And, you know, I respect a department head who will advocate for their employees in this way. It's been done by a variety of them, Scott is not the first. And he's done his research. This is requested by his board. It, it is within the allowable of the CBA. So, I think we should go ahead and adhere to the issues or the wishes of his board.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, we don't have a secretary, so I don't know that we can...
Okay.
Well, we could make a motion, it's part of the, I don't know, what do you think? Do you want to?
It needs to be in black and white.
Well, have, ask Debbie to just keep track of the motions, which is what the minutes would be anyway. So, I will move that we grant Scott the requested market adjustment to 1750 as requested by his board.
We're also going to answer to the taxpayers, the agricultural aspect of the county.
Absolutely.
So, I don't think we should be jumping too high.
How much of a jump is it, Scott?
Right now, I am at 1532 an hour. Just a few facts and figures that I've ran. That's, that's $31,098 a year. For me to be making a gross income of $35,000 a year, I would have to be jumped up to $1675 an hour. You know, like I say, these, these things that were all considered are also from counties, and I, I can do this, which one was it? Stillwater, or no, one of the ones that I kind of questioned, and they just, they just hired a person in Sweetgrass County. They were very similar in us. They just hired a person there. They started their person at $1650 an hour, and at their six-month probation period, they jumped them to $1850 an hour. Another one was Muscle Shell Golden Valley. Their committee did a proposal to combine both counties and the weed program. They did not require a bachelor's degree or any experience. They said because they didn't, because of what they were offering, which was 14 to 16 bucks an hour, they couldn't even get an applicant to put in, apply with a bachelor's degree at those wages. So, they had to remove that requirement to even get an application. They hired a person to do their spraying at 15 bucks an hour without a bachelor's degree, let alone any experience. And they don't do any of the spraying. They only do like a quarter of their own spraying. The rest of their program is all contracted out. So, just to kind of give you a little base, you know, where the 1750 dollar comes in, we might be a smaller county, but you're also asking me to do a lot of these jobs, such as the spraying, the grant keeping, you know. A lot of these counties, too, because of the demands, are going to full-time assistance. You know, and they're still paying up, they're above that 17, 18 bucks an hour.
It's my understanding the money's in your budget to do this.
Correct. We are making...
It does not add any more to the tax base.
We are not asking anything that we already are not, you know, approved or listed. It's within our, we are making adjustments within our budgets.
And I think, you know, something Franklin said, I think, is right on. We have to look at the ag community about this. Scott, in being proactive, has gotten equipment for people to rent so that they can do their own weed spraying when it works best for them. Target it as they need to. He has been writing grants. You know, there's 77, 736 here. So, he's a grant writer as well for his department, which has always been a necessity with the weed department. You know, you came to us with a proposal last, six months ago, to save money by restructuring your department because, again, we're looking forward. I, I think that to lose a good, forward-looking employee, to bring in somebody who has to go through the year learning curve, again, or more, depending on how much experience they would have, is a tremendous disservice to our ag community. So, I, I agree with Franklin on that. I think we need to keep them foremost in our mind, and 1750 compared to these other numbers is not unreasonable.
Something else that I do that, that not a lot of people are aware of, there are getting to be people out in the county, but I'm one of them guys that, just because a weed's across the fence, I'm the kind of guy, I'm going to get out there and spray it. So, I am giving that to the community. I mean, I take a project area every year and donate so much time to it. And that comes out of my budget, my time.
It is definitely an ag community.
Well, I can see where, you know, within the budget, the sprouting, okay. But what I hear a lot from the ag community might say is that we should be doing the contract spraying. Have a con, different contractors come in and handle it. So, that's another aspect that's come to me quite a bit.
A commercial applicator is going to cost you right now anywhere from 6250 at the very bottom to about 8590 an acre, and that's your cheap contractors. Right now, with the program that I'm doing, I'm, I'm right about the same cost with my equipment. I'm probably right around that 62 to 70 an acre. And that's...
But if we did that, but the contractor, that person's not going to go out and get those grants. Depending on your budget.
The only thing that would, that would change if we went to a contractor is they're going to take over spraying our county highways, which I'll guarantee you, that 150-foot buffer that my hand line reaches out, those commercial applicators aren't going to do that. They're going to stay within them boundaries. So, if you put them on a road that has a 45-foot easement, that's where they're spraying. They're not going to go out to even 55 feet. They're going to stay within that, and that's law. Now, I can get away with it because I'm also the holder of the non-compliance laws. So, I, you know, there's, there's gray areas in there, but I can get away with a little more than a contractor's spray attempt because liability issues and things like that.
Another question, Scott, would be where would those contractors live? Where do they live? Where would you hide them from?
Right now, the contractor that we do have, that, that has our contract agreement for the BLM, State Lines, yada, 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 is out of Clancy, Montana.
So, we'd be paying, what, $15 to $20 more per acre to a guy who lives in Clancy versus somebody who lives in Broadwater County?
There are a lot of variables.
There's a lot of variables, I mean...
Well, that's just this one example.
That's one. The one we have right now and the numbers that I'm, that I presented you, that's what they charge me for the state highways. I do contract out all the state highways for the highways. And it's, it's, I believe, without having the actual numbers here, and it varies depending on chemical and, and things like that, but I believe it's, it's between 6250 and about 85 bucks an acre.
Well, that's what you're charging the highway?
That's, that's what they, yeah, and all I do...
Oh, all right.
All I do is I get their actual invoice, which tells me the chemicals that they put down, the rates, the amount, their hourly labor, everything, you know, their equipment costs. And that's how I figure mine, too, is by the acre. But that's the rates that they, they send to me, and then we basically write a check and say, okay, and send them, then invoice MDT directly, and they pay us.
Do they provide the chemical?
The contractor does, yes. In previous years, we have had, had it to where we provide the chemical. However, I've found that's a pain in the butt. I mean, it's, when you're talking, you know, $10,000, $12,000 trying to get together with that commercial applicator to get them chemical back, and then, you know, storage and, and everything else, it's, it's just easier for them to provide it out.
Definitely, that's, that's why with the contractor, they, they handle all that stuff. The insurance kind of wouldn't be involved in any of that, you know.
But as it is, you know, I'm able to be able to facilitate the spraying on all county highways the same way. I mean, I store, I store my own chemical. I determine what chemical I'm going to use where. Certain things like that, you know, within this county, and I still do it within a budget, the 6.6 millimeter budget that I maintain. The one thing that I have been able to do is through grant funds and things like that, is purchase equipment to become more efficient, and so I can keep offering these projects like cost sharing and, and chemical cells and things like that. Another issue that we've really got to be aware of is all the sensitive areas within this county. Luckily, we have a commercial applicator right now that is aware of, a lot of them has been around here, but even he will tell you, he doesn't want to deal with those areas. Because of liability for a commercial applicator to spray anywhere on or near, say, a road like the Tostedam Road, it's going to be a hundred and some dollars an acre.
So, what is the, the worry there on Tostedam Road?
What's that?
What is the worry on Tostedam Road?
Two irrigation districts, a major river, and a potato farmer right below it. And then there's some real heavy, nasty weeds along that, that road, you know. And then there's multiple areas within this county that have potato farms. Potatoes are one of the most sensitive crops out there. You put tordon in a field that has potatoes, and that, tordon has a 20-year residual life effect.
They don't like 24D, do they?
24D, but it's, that residual goes down to a year. You know, miles can have a five, five-year residual effect on it. So, how do you, how do you control Lathie's verge? And get a true control on it in an area where there's potatoes?
One, one thought that comes to mind, and I wish your board were here. Before you were hired, they actually contracted out some of the spraying around the county during that interim period. Why didn't they approach us and say, hey, we don't want a weed coordinator, we want to just contract? You know, these are five-egg people. So, I, I guess, I think it would be the responsibility of the board to approach us and say, contract is, is wiser than having a weed coordinator. I don't think that that's a decision that we should be making on our own unilaterally. So, I guess, I guess, looking at, looking at, again, the ag community, this board represents the ag community. It's John Ferret, Dan Place, Lonnie Gobs, Don Penninger, and John Potter. I, I'm from all areas of the county. Yeah, yeah. This is their proposal, this is their request, and you're really their employee.
And under Montana Code annotated, and this is a 2011 version, powers and duties of a board, Okay, I'll just read this first right here. 722-2109, powers and duties of the board. In addition to any powers or duties established in a resolution creating a district weed board, the board may supervise a coordinator and other employees and provide for their compensation. And that is right there in Montana Code. So, it's, like she said, it's kind of to their discretion, you know. I can say that since I've been here, yeah, we used to contract out spraying, but they're seeing where the program that I'm heading towards is, it's more efficient, more effective for me to go out and spray. I do know that when I started, just, just an area of example, the Dry Creek Road, I contracted that year, that first year, and just in the approximate five-mile stretch there of what I call the canyon portion, between the commercial applicators, myself, we put out 23 acres worth of chemical that first year. Last year, we did all the spraying on the whole highway, or on that whole road, just myself and my employees, and we put out 18 acres on the whole road. This year, we went back in, and I put out 10 acres. A commercial applicator is going to come in, and they're probably not going to spread as far as I did and knock that, be able to knock that back like I have. So, you take, and I think that, that first year that I was here, that 23 acres was just in a third of that road. But because I was there and involved, I've knocked it down, you know, to, to eight, nine acres less in the whole road than what we did in just that one third. I don't know if the community is just not realizing, you know, that I am out there putting that back into the community or not, you know. But another primary area that I've really, really, really worked on and have worked with the community is, is Long Mountain Road. That's been a horrible, horrible, horrible nasty infestation. And it's just been within the last year or so that I am actually hearing the agencies and the landowners saying, hey, we're actually being able to see clear rideways. Indian Creek the same way. You know, I've been really pushing to get inter-agency activities going on up Indian Creek.
What was the weed out at Long Mountain Road?
The primary weeds out there are Dalmatian tow flex and spotted knaffweed. And the Dalmatian tow flex is, is very thick. I think this year, just on the north Long Mountain Road, and I didn't even get a chance to cover the whole road, but I think on that one, we put out 12 acres worth of chemical. And then the bottom, the regular Long Mountain Road, we put out 18 acres, I believe.
Any thoughts?
I made a motion, I'll stand on that motion. Break my thoughts.
Well, so within the budget there, for this year, then, I guess it, we'd like to go with that. I think we'll be there in a while, but...
Is that a second?
Yeah, I'll say it.
It's moved to second, then, that we grant the weed district boards the consent to give Scott a raise. All in favor, just say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carried.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hold on, Scott. I had my hand raised back to the...
I'm sorry.
I just have, I have a quick question because of the issue with his. Do you, do you need to have stuff like that in a, on an agenda?
We should probably add it to the 30th, but it's incorporated in the budget. Yeah.
Good point.
Well, I, I don't know, because budget, you know, discussions are different. But I know that became an issue and passed away.
It just be, has to be safe, rather.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. We've been down that road before, and it's not fun. Okay, next one.
I would say next is the employees. 45 cents per hour for elected officials. I believe that we should stay with the practice we adopted, and frankly, was adopted, adopted long before you and I got on this board, but what the county compensation board... No, that's fine, I understand. I just believe that we should adopt for all employees what the county compensation board voted for elected officials, so 45 cents per hour for employee.
Well, that, we're still not clear because, and Brenna can correct me. We understand those salaries are still illegal according to Montana State Code for you, undersheriff, for three or four employees.
And the, and the other elected officials, from what I understand.
So, until that's squared around, how can we?
How are they illegal?
Well, because of the Public Safety Committee Commission, whatever you want to call it, and Montana Code annotated the way it's set up. If we don't have a public safety committee, the deputies are supposed to be set at 90% of mine, but they're above that, and they're above the undersheriff. The captain's isn't, doesn't fall into play. So, I don't know how that would work.
That issue's out of our hands. It has been for months, going on a year now. Testimony during the arbitration hearing was that there was a public safety commission. It turned out there wasn't one. It was never legally set up as it should have been. The, what brought the deputies up was a legal decision by the arbitrator that we got. We've worked with Cindy, I forget her name now, Cindy...
Proctor.
Yes, over and over and over and over on this. What needs to happen now is that there needs to be a legal process that you and Carla put together, either one of you separately or both of you together, it doesn't matter to us, but that's in your, your basket of, of to-dos. You need to go through the legal process of getting it set up, work with the city and the county to get it filled with five, seven, however many members, and then they need to address the issue. Once that commission is set up legally, and it was understood it was, and that's one of the reasons the arbitration went the way it did, once that is set up, then that board can either, A, vote amongst themselves to keep the pay as it is, and that makes it legal, or B, approach the county and the city for a raise for particular elected officials. And that is the only way that the sheriff and undersheriff, undersheriff at 95% of sheriff, could be raised higher than the rest of the elected officials as we stand now. Right now, you're based off of either district quarter, the clerk or recorder. That would actually set public safety totally separate. But the commission needs to be set up, and that is not part of the budget, and it's not part of our job. That is the job of either the sheriff herself, or the county attorney, or both of them working together. So, it, it really isn't a relevant piece of this, and we've discussed it before. And that's, this is probably the 16th time that this has been brought forward and explained. I don't know what else to say.
Well, because there's, there's still could be changes, whatever this compensation board end up with.
Not the compensation board, the compensation board just does the county elected officials.
Right, but that's, everything's based kind of on that. I like that 45 cent, 40 cent, right, yeah.
Only 45 cents additional per hour for all employees. The rest of it is a completely separate, separate matter. It has absolutely nothing to do with the county at this point. It is, or the county commission and the budget at this point. It has to do with the law enforcement department and the county attorney, and however they choose to move forward. But it's not anything that has anything to do with the budget or the commission.
Can you and Carla get together and get that going?
I have. She's just so busy with criminal. I've provided her with the agreement from Donna and Shelby and...
We'll give her a call and see if you guys can get it going.
Well, that or, one way or the other, I mean, if, if I'm supposed to be set at the same as you guys, I mean, something needs to be done, because he is correct in a sense, we are doing this illegally. If we're going by code, it's illegal. If we're going by what we thought was the public safety commission and isn't, that makes the code even, us more illegal with code. If you go by union contract, it's not, it doesn't even abide by that.
So, I guess I move that we extend to all employees the same 45 cents per hour that the county compensation board voted on for elected officials.
And I would like to see that you send a letter to Carla and to Brenda and tell them, please get this done.
I, I, again, it's not the commission's role at this point. It is out of our hands. It, I, I'm not comfortable with that. Again, being, this has been a subject that has been addressed and readdressed and readdressed over the last nine months to a year. It is out of our hands. It is up to Brenda and Carla to get it going, and it really is not anything the commission has anything to do with at this point. We obeyed a court order, and the rest of it... We obeyed a court order and the rest of it was either misunderstood. Um or not understood, or I don't know what. But it needs to be handled by those two. They are well aware of it. And I don't, I don't think it's appropriate for us to jump in the middle.
So that could still change everything.
If we give everybody the forty-five cents, what does that do to you and your staff?
I don't know, that's why I'm asking. Are we going by the union contract, by the code? Are they just going forty-five cents across the board, which they haven't in the past? They usually do it by percent. I don't, I can't, I can't answer that, Lynn.
The forty-five cents was something this commission agreed to a couple of years ago. When you have employees making twenty-four dollars an hour and twelve dollars an hour and you give percentage raises every year. COLA is based on a basket of goods going up by a certain amount. When you have these two making this much more, or this difference, and you do a percentage every single year, this guy does this. This guy does this, and you have a dichotomy between the highest paid and the lowest paid that just gets huge. There's an ill effect on morale. Um and it's something our commission board decided a couple of years ago to alternate. This is not new. We decided to alternate percentage one year, solve number the next. That's where this is. It's not new.
I think, I think it was, was it two years ago we went with twenty cents?
Two or three, I don't remember.
Okay, at that time, I got the twenty cents, my undersheriff got eighteen and the deputies got seventeen because they are percent per statute of mine. That's why I don't know how this is gonna be figured.
And my understanding from talking with Natalie a couple of years ago is that, um that had been my understanding is that was the way it would work. And she said, no, there's a twenty percent base that everyone will get. But some of the people who have deputies will get a penny or two more. So you actually should have.
That's, that's, that's why I say, I don't know what they would get because they're already well above the ninety percent. They're over, you know, they're over ninety-five percent. So I don't, it, they wouldn't, I would guess, I don't know how this would work now.
Where's, where'd you gonna come from for this raise? I, one time they said at a twenty cent an hour raise, it was twenty thousand plus benefits, I believe. So this would be double, it'd be forty, you were talking sixty, eighty thousand extra. Um where's that coming from?
It sounds to me like the money's in the budget.
That's, yeah, I, you know, there's, there's this vicious rumor out there and there's no basis to it. The county is not broke. I have a pilt sheet in front of me. And it says right here that the beginning cash for fiscal year two thousand fourteen is one point four million. That we ended um actual for fiscal year thirteen, ending cash uh was one point four three million. Actual cash as of nine, ten, thirteen was nine hundred and thirty-four million. Based on an assumption that next year we'll get a hundred thousand less in pilt than we got this year. That's, I'm just looking at this. So we're sitting in about a million dollars in pilt. Should we just put that under the mattress and not, you know, not use it to compensate employees or to uh for operations for the county? We're not broke. Um and I, I guess.
Well, I like to say they reserve them there.
That's, that's such a destructive rumor, and I think it's out there as a rumor for one reason and one reason only. And that is to be destructive. And I guess that's why I take such offense to that rumor. Um we and our department heads have done a very, very good job of managing the departments responsibly. Managing this county responsibly and fiscally. I, I think the rumors for the purpose of destruct, destruction need to end. As far as the salary, Debbie, isn't this something that you work with?
Disgusted with anything, are they?
Into the mission as a P role?
As far as what? Their wages, so.
Oh, I got a couple that are saying they're going backward.
No, of, of just getting time. I mean, is this something that we just, we're certainly not getting a lot of, we.
I can, I can say I can only probably provide um reports that show that I'm making less money now. You know, taking home less money now than when I first started here.
Well, that's.
And that's.
Probably generally across the private sector, I mean.
But, you know.
You know.
But it doesn't mean that our.
I think just about everybody that has, that has worked with the county are, are glad, damn glad, probably to have the job and the benefits they have.
I will tell you, I have never, ever complained about my wages. You guys do. And since I've been here, I mean, when I started here, I was, I was at seven fifty an hour in nineteen eighty-nine. That one year, we had a jump that one year and it was, I mean, Jim Hall and Steve McCullough and I think it was Bob Davis or whoever it was, but. I mean, we, we jumped up, we jumped up like six bucks an hour. Like in, like in a year, two years somehow, and I, I don't know how, but it was great. But, you know, like I said, I've never complained about my wages. I'm not gonna complain about my wages. Like I said, I've got a couple of employees that, that, that keep telling me they're going backwards and, and. I listen to them and I'm not gonna sit and argue with them. I, I. I'm happy here and whatever. When I like more money, you bet.
The private sector, that was a question brought, you know, on this, on this insurance. Everybody's insurance goes up. Everybody's gotta, everybody in the private sector, they got a managed zero and that, that's it. It goes up, it goes up. If you're in this case, a county employee, is the county gonna take care of it? Do you increase, you know?
Yeah. Well, it, I mean, it, it all helps and I'll tell you, I, I appreciate it. I am one employee that, that truly appreciate it because this is good insurance. And, and you guys, in, in my opinion, that's, that's a good way for you guys to, to help us out a little bit. Like I said, I'm not gonna complain either way.
But you look at the private sector, their insurance goes up and nobody complains about it.
What's also out there in the private sector is their wages are compensatory to having money to include coverage for that. Where ours are down here and we get the benefit of our medical, their wages are up here because we get it in our medical. If you were to add that equivalent to what's the benefit we get in our salary. We would get another five dollars an hour to all our salaries to cover the interim and spend it on the insurance that the private sector has to pay for. Where right now, we don't have to do that. We get that benefit from our commissioners, but at a lower salary. If we're to add that to it, that's what the private sector is making.
Exactly. And even like other, either co, other counties. I, I contacted a whole bunch of counties this, this last winter for this, I, I was trying to do this margin adjustment thing. Well, anyway, it's the same thing. I mean. If, if you guys didn't say pick that up, I mean, there's counties like us, they're actually getting. You know, I mean, they're, they're making an extra four or five bucks an hour. To make up for this insurance rather than you guys picking it up. You know, just, just a hundred and four bucks, but, see what I'm saying? So, you know, we're actually a little bit lower rate.
I think we were to change insurances.
And the insurance and the other benefits, they, they, they pick up, I mean, they make up a difference in my opinion. And that's, you know, a couple of my guys, that's, they don't quite understand that. I do. Cause there's guys, there's guys out there, real supervisors out there right now, they're making twenty-nine, thirty bucks an hour.
But they're probably paying three or four hundred a month out of their pocket for insurance.
They are.
Where we aren't. So it's just kind of a trade-off and a balance.
It's a wash.
It, it comes out as a wash.
It's actually, in my opinion, a little cheap for you guys to pick that up.
It is, it's a cheaper way to go.
But unless we wanna just, you know, stay at, you know, eighteen bucks an hour and then take four hundred, four or five hundred bucks out of the check for insurance.
Damn, listen to him, Holly.
Oh, boy.
Well, and that's, you know, one of the reasons I've stuck with the job here. Um I mean, it's, it's a good job and, and it's a great county to work for, but it's the insurance that. You know, before, my husband was paying a thousand dollars a month out of his paycheck for our insurance. And now, you know, it costs us, so I can afford to pay the five hundred dollars a month to drive back and forth. Because it still saves us money in the, in the long run, so, yeah.
When I retired from the state, I was with the state insurance. And I, I stayed on that insurance even after I was elected here as a commissioner. Because I've had lots of medical problems, as you're all aware, and uh they've been very good to me. But I just got a letter yesterday, six hundred dollars a month is coming out of my P E R S. And maybe the smart thing would be to, to drop the state and you can just be on the county, but.
You're saving us money.
Yes, I am. Yes, I am. I would rather know that, because I've been with them for so long, but what it would do. My heart surgery was well over a hundred grand and I didn't pay enough to tell about. Thoughts, questions?
I stand on my motion. Um I, I think that uh Public Safety Commission needs to be enacted ASAP. Unfortunately, I have no control over that, but I do not believe that the rest of the employees should be penalized because that hasn't gotten underway. Um it was a court order that, I, you know, it's, it's not a decision we made. And I'm just not comfortable with penalizing our employees because of it. And I'm also extremely uncomfortable on a moral stand at taking forty-five cents an hour when our employees won't get it. So I stand on my motion.
Well, I'm comfortable because I think we're premature on it myself, but so I guess that's my opinion.
What would, what would you like to see or what would you like to know first?
Well, this, what I keep here on time is the sneak lax aspect with the, with the sheriff's department there. And then from that, I don't know, of course, I guess maybe I'm old fashioned. I've worked for myself all my life and. My way of joy stayed pretty much the same forever and I paid all my own expenses, you know? So in a way, I guess I'm probably a, how would you say? Maybe a poor one on, on, on regulating some of this stuff towards employees. But probably more um common sentence, in fact, to work for myself and be viable for this fifty years, sixty years, whatever I've been doing, so.
I'm just curious, is there something I could provide or do to help?
Debbie, how would it affect the sheriff's office, the deputies?
Well, the way I see it with what we're currently doing, you would get forty-five cents, the deputies would get forty-five cents. Because of the way the arbitration and I had to go. I can't take away those years where there was percentages and because the percentage of the statute isn't working. You would get your forty-five cents, we would get forty-five cents, the deputies would get forty-five cents. There's no statute to base it on because that went out the window, of course, through all this arbitration. Until that's settled, that's the only option I see. Is everybody gets it regardless of elected official contract until that's settled. And then at that point. It would be making the difference if it's in favor of the salaries versus statute.
Well, the statute's clear.
So, I know, but.
That's, that's what I mean.
Right, but in the, like, that's where the whole thing, this whole. When they did this, they were under the assumption there was a public safety agreement. So that's where all the advice went the way it did. Now here after the fact, we find out it's not, so you can't take away from everybody. But if the contract says if one employee gets forty-five cents, they all gotta get it, the same or better. I don't know how you can't not give it to them. I'd have, I'd have to work it into where everybody got forty-five cents. I think, guys, I have to handle separate.
So would you go, would, would you have to go back then to the twenty cent raise and give them a raise from then?
No, because that was a different contract and that was pre-arbitration. They got their twenty cents. Everybody got their twenty cents based on that arbitration. They got their twenty cents plus those that applied the COLA. There was nothing taken away.
My deputies didn't get twenty cents.
They did.
Neither did the unders, no, it was a percent of mine. Go back, cause I heard about it, believe you me.
Because that was a question then that Natalie had questioned into, do they get the flat twenty cents or how does it? I was instructed to give them twenty cents, so. Heard about it, um.
Basically, what, basically constituents, um sure forty-five cents would sound like much, well, you figure all the benefits. It would just, in other words, we just cost the county another, I'm just guessing, throw in a figure, eighty thousand. That's what I'm thinking about too.
There's, there's a bigger picture that needs to be seen. In our roles, we are the CEOs of this county. A CEO has essentially three responsibilities. One is the budget to manage it responsibly, check. Two is to protect the county citizens from liability so that they don't end up paying uh court decisions. And three is to manage our employees. We manage our employees by appreciating the work they do for the county and by encouraging them to do more with less continually. We have done that. One of the ways, and really the only way we have of recognizing them other than a heartfelt thank you, is by providing adequate compensation. We're already below that per the auditor. This is COLA. That's not even giving anybody anything more than COLA. This is the average COLA for the average employee. That's just keeping up with inflation. That's all that this raise is gonna do, is just help our employees stay up with inflation. This is a way of saying thank you. The other thing we have to realize is. The employees who work in Broadwater County, who do not commute out of this county. Are the ones most likely to shop at Bob's, to use the services here, to buy gas here, to support the activities here in the community. Those who commute out of the community, many of them have their children going to school in the other, in Lewis and Clark County, counties in three fourths. Uh they do their grocery shopping there and they do their circulating of the economy there. The local employees circulate the economy here. They help Broadwater County's growth. And as we've talked about in previous meetings, an increased valuation is based on growth. That does not, an increased valuation does not mean a citizen is paying more. It in fact means an individual citizen or business is paying less in taxes.
That's why people pay more now because of the growth.
No, it isn't. No, no, frankly, you need to look at the fact.
A subdivision. Agriculture and business are stationary because they don't require all the services that. They don't even want to get on that part of it, but that's out of the picture.
You, you need to get educated on how this really works. All I'm saying is, we are helping the economy of our community and helping keeping pat, taxes low by paying attention to. And working on the economy of our local uh community.
And like I said before, I, I think every county employee is, is happy, happy to have the job for one thing. I mean, they're, they're good jobs. They're, they may be not the highest paying, but they're good in this area.
But I don't think the issue today is, should we start laying people off? I think the issue today is, should we be compensating our employees so they stay up with inflation?
I don't see why I'd lay anybody off.
But it isn't about just keeping people in a job. It's about appreciating our employees. And thanking them for a job well done by helping them keep up with inflation. Madam Chair, I'm gonna go get my audit book and I'm going to um just take a two-minute break. I'll be right back.
Hi, Greg.
Yes.
Mike, this is completely off the record. The women's restroom upstairs, that toilet is very, very, very low. And when you go to sit down, you think you're going to the basement. Is there any way we can just, I'll pay for it, you're gonna, I mean.
You need a new toilet, you need a higher standing one.
A higher standing one. Yeah, I mean, I don't know how, that may be.
That's no problem. That's no big deal, it's no problem.
No, like I say, I'll pay for it.
Is it, is it floor mounted or is it wall hung?
Upstairs are floor mounted, they're easy.
Yeah, wouldn't even have to change the tank, you'd just get the bowl.
Well, usually it comes, you can get the whole unit cheaper than you can get just the bowl. Then you can get a whole unit for probably a high rise one with a good flush, probably for like a hundred and sixty bucks, a hundred and eighty bucks.
Like I say, I'll pay for it.
Bet you can go up in the woods and cut yourself a tree and cut yourself a little lift about that big, you know?
There you go, David.
Just leak all, leak everything down to the front. No, they're not, they're not very expensive.
I don't know why it was...
It must be one of yours because almost all are high rise, you weren't in commercial.
Yeah, all of them are commercial, but those are residential's.
Yeah, so I said they must have been older.
They probably went in there and went cheap. I find a lot of stuff that was built in the addition very cheap. I'll be honest with you, I repair a lot of stuff and I see a lot of stuff that was done.
That's obviously one.
It was, it was spec probably bigger, but they probably didn't put in what they spec.
That's how I guess I'm, because it's the same with commercials too, I'm surprised I didn't see it.
Kind of like our heating system. It was, should have been spec'd better than it was.
I thought it was...
For better efficiency, huh?
I thought I was gonna underestimate my life on that one upstairs because of my hip and there's nothing to grab on to to help me up. And I thought, wow, this is a nice thing.
There's no grab rails.
No grab bar there either.
No.
We, the grab rails, they cost like, I just put a couple, one and a couple handicap. They were like sixteen bucks a piece.
Well, what I'd really like to see is a higher toilet.
We can put a higher toilet in there.
That's fine, we actually get it done.
Like I say, all for the darn thing.
I only sometimes only know about things until somebody says something to me about it.
Yeah.
Well, you don't use the women's restroom, why would you know that?
That's right.
Madam Chair, may I just quickly share some facts and figures from the...
Yes, you can.
We do an annual audit. We have an annual audit done by Benny and Downey Associations, Associates. Okay, so in two thousand and three, the required taxes, property taxes on a home or business valued at one hundred thousand dollars was one thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars. Ten years later, after experiencing twenty-six percent growth in this county, two thousand twelve, the required annual property taxes on a hundred thousand dollars worth of home or business is eight hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Wow.
That's a twenty-eight percent decrease in the property tax.
Wow.
That is the base. And that is, that's what I've been saying. When citizens agree to vote for five more mills for weed, those taxes go up. When they vote for the school, those taxes go up. When a home and business is valued higher, those taxes go up. This is based on a hundred thousand dollars of value. Those increases are not due to the growth. I mean, the valuation could be and is, and if you own a business or a home, you're glad to see that. But you do not correlate, you cannot correlate growth with higher taxes. It is not the same thing. The other thing I'm gonna read to you is the paragraph that I've been referring to multiple times. County employee salaries have been lower than average. The county employees received a twenty cent per hour increase during fiscal year twelve. During the fiscal thirteen budget process, the commission set aside a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars in their budget for anticipated COLA increases. County Compensation Board voted to recommend a four point two percent COLA for elected officials. And the county commissioners voted to extend that to all county employees. This will increase base salaries and wages and assist the county in retaining employees long term and cut down on staffing turnover. We already discussed the cost of staffing turnover in hiring employees.
So we could go ahead, do the forty-five cents for all employees and wait for the salary commission, or the...
Public Safety Commission?
Commission. And then do a budget amendment to correct that.
If it needs to be done?
Right, if it needs to be done.
Yeah. The formulation of that commission makes the current pay structure legal. It would be up to that commission if they want to pursue a higher wage for the sheriff and undersheriff.
Franklin, thoughts?
Yeah, still on my own, I, like I was, I still think we're premature on it, but...
I think it affects his very next payroll, does it not, Debbie?
No, by the time I can, it could affect because I could add the forty-five cents to everybody's current payroll by the eighth, the twenty-third. But any adjustments couldn't be done until the following pay period. To go retro to whatever previous pay periods.
So we're best doing it ASAP.
If you wanted to affect this pay period, well, it can't be affect this pay period because the final budget, you guys aren't gonna vote till the third yet. So it wouldn't happen till the eighth.
Is that retro then? Also, how come this committee thing that Brenda and, and... How come that's never been done?
Nobody's pushed it, I guess.
See, to me, I mean, it, it makes sense to me. It should have been done a long time ago so that a bunch of this stuff would get taken care of.
There was a compensation committee, that's the ones that come up with that four point two.
No, it's two different things.
Yeah, it's two different things.
Dana, the answer to your question is I think everybody's waiting for somebody else to do it. Nobody wants to put in the work, nobody has the time to put in the work, so they haven't put in the work.
Well, you know what? Sometimes you gotta do some stuff, sometimes you gotta make time. I mean, I was, I was, I was on my way somewhere else last night. I got a call, I got two washouts, three washouts, I got one on Grayson Creek and one in Dracrick. You know what? Made time and went and fixed it. You know, I mean, it's this, this committee thing, I mean, between Brenda and, 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 you know, the county attorney. I, I know there's, there's tension there, but so what? Let's get it handled, let's get it taken care of. And that'll alleviate a whole lot of this garbage that's going on again.
Exactly.
In my opinion, but who am I to say? I'm not, that's not part of my deal, so. Whatever, but anyway.
Well, I'm gonna write the bullet. I will second your motion. This motion second to grant the county employees a forty-five cent an hour increase for all county employees. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same?
Agreed, Dana.
Okay, Mark Franklin, abstaining, please. Motion carried.
Okay, next issue, the health insurance. Do we pick up the full hundred and four dollar increase from April? Or do we continue with the status quo? Or do we do nothing and let you guys pick up the hundred and four entirely?
What is the cost?
Debbie, do you have that by chance?
Cost for...
To do the one hundred and four and the sixty dollars health insurance? I mean, it's pretty easy math.
Per person, it's eleven thousand, one hundred and forty-seven. Right now, we're paying the hundred and twenty-six.
Say that again, I think I misunderstood.
One thousand, one hundred and forty-seven is the monthly cost per person for our health insurance.
Okay.
Right now, the employees are paying a hundred and twenty-six of that a month. But the commissioner's picking up the balance.
And thank you.
Nine hundred and something.
Appreciate it.
What, what, that hundred and four increase, we split, commissioner picked up sixty-four, employees picked up twenty, or forty, sorry.
The thing is, is there's nothing additional on it, no taxes on it. So it's just a solid hundred and four per person. We have fifty-two full-time employees.
It's pre-tax.
It's pre-tax.
So what was your tax, what would you come?
It's sixty-five thousand dollars total that would come out of the health insurance budget.
And the money's there.
And that's for the hundred and four that the Compensation Board requested.
Where would we stay status quo?
I will figure that out here in just a second. The... Status quo would be continuing to pay sixty per month per employee. That would be thirty-seven thousand. Just for the record, I round.
So what, that would be then a hundred and four on top of what we were already paying at eighty-six. Be like a hundred and ninety is what it would do to employees. We had the sixty-four that you're already paying on top of the one twenty-six. That puts us up to a employee pay a hundred and ninety, if you don't pay, if you just let it expire and don't do anything.
Okay, all right.
So the third option, back to the third option.
Yeah.
You just let it go and we pick it all up.
Thoughts? Um... I'm not sure I have any yet. I'd kinda like to hear from Franklin on this one. I've, I've done an awful lot of arguing today, I guess I'm needing a rest.
Franklin.
Status quo, like we are.
And why do you say that?
I guess I just, the way I thought, well, it should be maybe. It affects me just like it does to any employee. I mean, my insurance is the same thing.
Doesn't affect me.
No. You're probably one of them.
There's four of us.
Oh, is there?
And last year I debated and debated about dropping the state and going with it. But I just stayed put. Because my P E R S comes from the state and they just take it out before I ever see it. But the letter yesterday was six hundred a month.
Oh, I know. Of course, all my life I was paying my own insurance, you know? I know I needed to just...
And Bob and I are both in Medicare age, so that's just as a supplement. That isn't the big ball of wax.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
What about from out in the crowd, tell us your thoughts. Mike?
I couldn't hear you because somebody was talking next to me.
Scott, knock it off. I wanna know what the three of you all think about the insurance.
Well, my thought, I mean, there are some people in here, you know, that does, do not make very much and it does make an impact on, especially some people upstairs, the clerk in the quarters and for, you know. Well, I mean, any benefit would help on that, I think. Whether it be sixty, forty, or the full pay on it.
Well, and I think most of the county employees aren't making palacious wages.
No. They're not.
And neither are the elected officials as far as that goes. But they chose to do that, just as we chose to do this. It's the regular county employees that I worry about.
Yeah. That's, I mean, I see them and I know, I know that they don't make very much, you know? I think anything's appreciated on their end. And it makes them more productive as an employee too.
Makes them happier to come to work.
You gotta think about that too. If you have an employee who's happy, who you make, you make, you make them feel like they're appreciated, they're gonna be more productive, they're going to do a better job, they're gonna show up on time, they're gonna stay the whole time, they're gonna, you know, and work to the end and put extra into it.
I would have to agree.
When I had my employees in my business, I treated them pretty good too because a lot of times I gave them, did things which you guys can't do, bonuses, and it did. It, it helped increase production and it made my quality of my workmanship for my employees also were better. And attitudes, how they were with the public and everybody else. So I mean, you gotta, you gotta outweigh sometimes, yeah, you're costing a little bit, but sometimes you're also increasing productivity.
Well, and I'm worried about, and I don't even know if we have any, but the single mom that is raising two, three kids and trying to buy groceries and not enough money to go around. The kids all need new shoes and...
They're the ones that are really getting the benefit of this insurance, no matter where or sad, you know? Really, because otherwise it'd be...
They'd be looking at Obamacare.
Probably, probably that twelve hundred a month or so for insurance. I'm just getting a little more now, say one with two kids. I, I don't know, I guess what the rates are being anymore, but it'd be really terrible. So now, say an employee, I think it's a sixty-fourty.
Now Obamacare, how is that gonna affect us as a county?
I will have to go and check hours. Anybody that works and there's certain criteria, they have to work because seasonals and all that funny stuff. There's a formula that we have to go through. But basically, anybody that works thirty hours or more a week, we will be required to offer insurance. But that would be anybody thirty hours a week for insurance purposes, that would be considered full-time. But for us, would be part-time. And right now, we do that at thirty-two. We pay for it if they work thirty-two hours, which is basically four eight-hour days a week. So two-hour difference, I don't think there's gonna be anybody we have to worry about. But we do have a lot of part-timers, those hours are split, that I would have to go check, plug into their formula because there's a formula, have to take all their part, all your part-time people, plug it in to come up with an aggregate of what you would have to add to your plan for that possible insurance coverage. It's, it's complex, it's not easy and that's why they postpone some of the penalties and things because they don't know what's gonna happen. But for us, for our purposes, we'd be looking at anybody who works thirty hours a week, we'd have to add.
And do we have anything?
I don't think there's too many because we've cut them off at thirty-two. And there's not too many there or there less. But I'd have to go back and pull reports and calculate hours and...
What about the girls over in the health department?
They're already on insurance at thirty-two hours a week. And a lot of them, of course, are grants, so grants funded. Other than the permitted medical does help.
And you don't have any, Dana, you're all full-time, right?
Yeah.
What about you, Scott?
It's just his seasonal, so he doesn't have any. Jerry, he's only like twenty-four to twenty-eight, sometimes thirty. But it's just fluctuated, so he would be the one we would have to possibly watch for. If he does an average of thirty a week, we would have to offer it to him.
And it's hard to keep him below that too sometimes. Only because of some of the things, like coming up with the toilet, you mentioned that, and I've been sitting here thinking about that. And realistically, that upstairs one should be ADA. Should have, should have taller toilets, it should have handrails inside. And it means we may have to change the sink.
Mine's tight.
So the...
Open a can of worms.
Oh, I didn't even think about it. You already have the court system up there.
Should be anyway.
And it should be. And so...
The jury is right next door.
I never, I mean, I never really thought about it until you just, you just popped it.
Till I held a pill on the floor.
But I mean, the sink would have to change in order to get, somebody could get in there with a wheelchair. And it is upstairs on the, in the corridor. And so what, a person who has, who has to go to court or be in trial, every time they have to go bathroom, they have to go all the way downstairs.
And even just a juror.
Which I think was compliant at the time, based on the volume and usage, I think that's why they did it that way. I'd have to look into that for audit stuff.
I have a hard time keeping, just with the normal duties, anything over the top. Because holding him back to his lower hours.
Going through the salary resolution and looking at the people who are making fourteen and lower per hour.
There's a lot.
There's a lot. If there's a lot, you know... If there's a lot, you know, those forty-five cents an hour will help, yes. When you think about who those people are, many of them do have families. They're trying to raise a family on fourteen, thirteen, twelve, eleven, oh-two per hour.
Yeah, of course, you gotta look at two, almost all or both in the family are working anymore too.
Um, when I look at these employees, I'm not sure that argument holds. And what I'm thinking is some of them are single, some of them are raising kids on their own. And I, I think the other part of that question is, is is that because they want to both be working and away from the kids? Or is it because they have to because they're only making eleven oh-two an hour? You know, there's a whole myriad of questions that go with that.
Oh, yeah.
With that comment. You know, Harold Blatty is my source on this. Harold Blatty talked to me a couple of years ago and he said, when you work on your budget, he said, you need to set some goals. And you determine what is your most important thing that you need to focus on. He said, for me as a commissioner, it was always the employees. How can I appreciate the employees so that I can keep them? Because replacing them is expensive. And I guess, I guess that, that stuck with me. We are offering a raise that is basically just keeping with inflation.
Barely.
Barely, barely. It doesn't include gas. What is gas doing right now? It's going up.
Three-six-two.
Exactly. That COLA does not include gas, which in my mind is completely nuts. Because especially in Montana where we're so spread out, that's a major part of our monthly expenditures. But um, what I'm gonna suggest is a compromise between what the county compensation board asked for in the one oh-four increase and what Franklin is suggesting with the sixty, which is status quo and that is eighty-two. County pays eighty-two of the monthly insurance and you guys would pay essentially twenty-two dollars less, whatever that is. So it'd be about a hundred and four, my math is right. That leaves us with about thirty-seven thousand for an increase in April again from Teamsters. It's, you know, it, it gives us a little bit of a cushion to work with. We had a fifteen thousand dollar cushion last year. That would just give us a little bit of an extra cushion. If we don't use it, it carries over to the next year. It's not a use it or lose it type situation, so um, I guess that would be my suggestion.
What's your thought on that, Franklin?
Yeah, I'm still status quo on the insurance. And like I say, on the other, I think we'll tell, bring it to her, so I get, you know, if you two wanna go ahead.
I'd like you to be comfortable with it, but...
Actually, maybe I'm just too old-fashioned and stuff.
You're getting old, Franklin. That's all I can say. And not that much older than me. I'll second your motion. If moved and seconded, then we split the insurance cost for the county employees and the county employees will be paying eighty-two cents.
Right? No, the county will pick up eighty-two dollars of the increase.
Alright, the county will pay the eighty-two cents. Eighty-two.
Eighty-two dollars.
And the employee will pick up the remaining. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carry. Oh, Franklin?
Obstain.
Obstain. Do you have any easy questions in that?
Nope, nope. You want the next one that we decided to table? Juvenile detention. We're sitting on, what was it, seven thousand right now? Do we want to infuse more today or on the thirtieth? Or do we want to leave it with the knowledge that we'll put more in as needed? It's our obligation by law, you know, to take care of that, so there's no way to not do it. But it does take money and just put it in a pot that can only be used for that. We're in no way in jeopardy of not having the money should it be needed. So the choice is A, do we infuse the juvenile detention budget with more money? I guess B, do we infuse it with more money from where? And C, do we leave it as status quo with the knowledge that we'll add it if it's needed?
Is there two parts to that? One is transportation to get them up there to Great Falls?
We have it all in one bucket.
Yeah, I think so.
Franklin?
Status quo and, but if it goes up that we make the amendment to, up at whatever it needs. We got whatever is seven thousand. If it goes to ten, we will inflection with the other three thousand.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I guess so. Okay, I'll make it a motion then.
I'll second that.
You can second it and if we do status quo on juvenile probation, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose the same. Motion carry.
With the amendment that it'll, you want that in there?
No, that's a given.
Yeah.
That's a given. That we could, we could, if necessary.
I don't need to stick around here, do I? I gotta get going. I still got some load to fix.
Alright.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, you guys.
You too. Just with the motions and this, was something I was kinda curious to, just to let you know that with the increase of the COLA and everything else, that market adjustment was the base that they were asking for. So the market, the forty-five cents could automatically go towards that. I mean, it wouldn't have to go seventeen ninety-five for me for that market adjustment, just so you would understand too. They were figuring that seventeen fifty is where they want me to be at with all the COLAs and everything.
Oh, okay, I hear ya.
You got that, yeah?
They feel that, and that, I just kinda was sitting here thinking on that because your concerns towards like the ag community and stuff, they feel that a salary at seventeen fifty, whether or not, you know, at this point, that's, that's correct. So I didn't know, this is all kinda prepared before even the thoughts of the, you know, that. So when you're looking at my market adjustment, that's where they want me at. So they feel that's prudent and appropriate at that seventeen fifty. So we could, we could absorb that COLA in this part of the...
It could end up being seventeen oh-five with the forty-five cent COLA, two seventeen fifty.
Yeah. If that, that, I hope that helps clear some things out.
Absolutely.
It did need because anyone that's gonna have the questions later.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be straight up seventeen fifty kinda where they were figuring, you know, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you, thank you.
We haven't, no, we don't have a motion on the floor. I'd like to amend my earlier motion that we have on grant the weed supervisor a seventeen, a increase in salary to seventeen oh-five.
I would like it to say something about by his board.
Yes.
Market adjustment by his board.
Yes.
That's what I said, put that in motion.
Yeah, I would. Second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Is moved second that the weed board grant to their weed supervisor seventeen fifty an hour?
Seventeen oh-five.
Oh-five.
Then it'll go to seventeen fifty when he gets his COLA.
Right. Per hour as a market adjustment by that board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carry.
Alright, thanks. Got that cleared up. So then the liability insurance, um... Do we wanna just do what we've done in previous years, pay from Pilt the bill and call it good?
I'm fine with that.
Probably.
Million dollars in Pilt.
Probably, we can do it anyway.
Yeah.
No, we can, we can do it through mills if we want to, but I don't think that's smart.
Which?
Uh, we have the mills, pay that out of mills if we want to. But it means taking it out of Public Safety and General Fund, probably fifty percent out of each. I don't think that's as smart as just paying it from Pilt. Pilt is, you know, at the discretion of the county commission and I have a letter to that effect I can read. This is a capital expenditure. It seems to me it's the smart way to go.
Is that a motion?
Um, yeah.
Yeah, because we can pull it from the Public Safety. I mean, we're bare bones there. In fact, we don't know where we're, I think we still gotta add more on that yet, playing it sound. But anyway, back to the, what was it?
Liability?
Yeah, that's gonna come out. The motion was to take it out of Pilt. I'll go along with that.
Second, then to pay liability insurance out of Pilt, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carry.
Senior stove, we already agreed on that, right? I'll see, bring that up on the thirtieth. The other thing is the proposal on the mills. I think that's the only other thing we have to, have to decide on. Do we adopt this or do we do something else?
Which one you got up?
What's that? Just the one with the proposed mills by fund?
I think the only one that is in question from everybody that was here is just on the Public Safety. Right?
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't see anything else to do there.
Unless there was something that weren't here, who wouldn't? Apparently not because they'd have been here, I guess, if they were.
Yeah, I think anybody that had questions or wanted concerns or changes was here and...
And we're still not sure on that. Public safety.
Yeah, if you have any ideas, throw them out on the table.
And not that this is to sway, but Lewis and Clark County has told me they have trouble with their Public Safety getting financing every year too. So it's not unique to us trying to come up with funds.
This has been going on for twenty-five years.
It's been one of years and the reports show every year, it's been an issue every year, basically since we lost the funding from, the revenue from Miguelton built their jail. But it's... Like Lynn said, it's just it's inherent in this county, so.
The thing is, I guess we just gotta figure where it's gonna come from.
It's tough.
Come from, but I don't think that twenty-five is enough yet though, from...
Yeah, actually, what it doesn't show here, but what is here, is actually a number you threw out at the last meeting. And that is thirty-three for Public Safety. You'll see on the left there, I say law enforcement, search and rescue. Public Safety used to include law enforcement, search and rescue, and the detention center. If you add the mills for law enforcement, search and rescue, and the detention center, you come up with thirty-three. So I, that was actually the target, was the number you threw out. And that, that is the thirty-three.
Plus, we've got that money that was taken out of there, that hundred forty thousand, still gotta be put back in there. Is that gonna have to come out of Pilt then?
That's part of the proposal, Franklin, that you have, that I gave you before. And fifty-seven is coming out of Pilt and the other is coming from the detention center. My hope is that in the future, we can start building a C I P for the detention center, but I just think it's gonna have to be one of those things we do incrementally. In an ideal world, we wouldn't have had to infuse that department, but since we do eighty-two would come, eighty-three thousand would come from the detention center surplus and fifty-seven from Pilt to equal one forty.
How much surplus does the detention?
Eighty-two, six forty-seven with maintaining thirty-three percent reserves.
Okay. I'm fine with that. That gives them a cushion.
It does, and it looks like a solid budget.
Because... But I wanna... Have it back and make sure that this is, before we finalize it.
You can call her back. The thing is, is she needs to determine how much goes to law enforcement and search and rescue. I put the two together because those are both her funds. So that's her choice on what happens there. The detention center by law is ours to fund and hers to manage. And that's why I set that at the hundred, hundred thousand dollars, because that was what we set last year. If you have any constructive ideas, I say throw them on the table. But this is, we've gotta get this figured out so that we can get it on the resolution for the thirtieth and um... You know, anybody's welcome to put out any ideas. This is just my proposal and all I could come up with.
Well, I'm fine with it, but I wanna make sure that she is fine with it. She's the, she's the one's gotta work with it, so I... If it was the nineteen is all it needed, fine. If it was the twenty-five... If it, but I mean, whatever it is, she's gotta be able to work with it and I think...
It's an increase over last year.
Substantial.
And just something just, just to throw out there that I noticed in running all the numbers. There was a lot of people that guessed their revenue was lower than last year, even though they had gotten in more. And hers is one of them. They got in more revenue than they expected, but this year they're counting on less revenue than they even budgeted last year. But they're increasing their expenditures even though they were decreased last year, so it's kind of created a flip in budgets. And there was quite a few people that did that, that we had to look at and say, do you realize you did this? Can you explain it? Because it didn't make sense to me why you would anticipate less revenue when you got more last year than, and even expect less this year than you got last year. So I asked a lot of people that question, trying to understand, and most of them said, I'm just being conservative on my guesses of my revenue because I don't know. So I don't, that is a possibility with this. But it's a guessing, but it is something from asking questions can be amended later. If we find we need, the revenues are less than they expected or more than they expected, then we're good. It does, on paper, it looks good. So that's just, just a thought on things I was seeing, just so you know, kinda what I saw in trying to throw all this stuff together, if that helps.
Would you be more comfortable if we called Brenda and asked her to come over?
Yeah, that'd be fine. Yeah, probably would be, but I'm, she had time to...
I'll bet she can make time.
No, I mean, we can ask her, no, but is she, is she gonna have to have some time to go through everything?
Well, I gave her reports a couple, three days ago, all the details, so she could really look at it, so...
She's had time, yeah.
I don't know if she hasn't had enough time or if there's, she's come up with any ideas or doesn't.
That's good. We get her here, we'll find out, I guess.
She and I worked last week together, so she's had, she's had ample time.
And I know, I know the sheriff's is losing some of their revenue because some of their grant monies are going away, but...
Yeah.
Even still, just overall.
Do you want yourself one of it?
That's what I called. Hey Brenda, we are working on your budgets, law enforcement, search and rescue. Do you have some minutes to come down here? Okay. Thanks, bye. She is at home and will be in, when she gets back.
Do you want to ask her to time her?
No, I don't know how far out she lives. I would imagine she'd be...
Seven, eight miles. I think she's near the middle of town now. Oh, has she?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't know that.
So, but she was gonna, she was gonna come right in, she said, or?
Um, I would assume so.
Okay, so we're, maybe we'll talk ten, fifteen, I guess. I, yeah, I don't know.
I have to say hats off to you two ladies for all the hard work you've done on this.
Thanks. Debbie has been a superhero at the time. Debbie has not only continued to do H R and payroll with Tammy's help, but really has been Debbie supervising and with the time cards. And then she's also done this. I cannot tell you how proud of her I am.
Oh, me too. And the thing that bothers me is that I wasn't able to be of help at all.
Which, which is why, yeah. Honestly?
Because I've watched him. He's listening to you. And you are committed to kind of believe in your, but then he is. Now, just before they come back in here, Nellie had done all the sheriff's office, already unloaded it before she was put on the... Now, just before they come back in here, Natalie had done all the sheriff's office, already unloaded it before she was put on leave. So she had the sheriff's pretty much done, if her friend is coming, but I was supposed to meet with her that following Monday, Tuesday, go over this. Now, most everybody has budgeted, requested the same as last year, the expenditures. She's increased almost all of them, without too much exception. Uniforms went up a thousand, but they only spent sixty-five, but they budgeted ninety-three, so they want ten-three this year. So I think there's ways, if she goes in and works with what last year's numbers were, and works hard at that, I think she'll make it. It'll decrease her expenditure, and now it'd be, might even be close to a hundred thousand. It, it just, you know, there's some things that can't be changed, you know, the, the salary overtime, those can't be changed.
No, it's just...
That contract services, they only spent five, they budgeted seven, but this year she wants ten. So without knowing more, are those areas, or why?
Hey, we are, uh, this is Laura. We're working on the budget right now. I was just wondering if you guys had anything extra for us? Okay.
Can you call the help line?
Okay. Okay, no, nobody, if she, um, if she gets done and wants to, uh, come down, she's more than welcome. Okay, thanks. Bye.
Who's that?
Uh, we had another, um, potential proposal from, uh, Carla, that, um, I wanted to make sure that it, she's in, in court today, but I wanted to make sure that she knew we were down here in case she wanted to, to bring that forth.
This is Thursday, I didn't think she was in court on Thursday.
I didn't either, no. Um, I will tell you, I talked to most of the department heads, Virginia, uh, Brian, um, Scott, individually about their budgets. Um, I think I, I just haven't talked to Elsa yet. And, um, they all have where they want, uh, their capital to go, so, um, everybody has been talked to individually, except for Carla, because she's been held.
Oh, she, her too, huh?
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that she had as equal opportunity as anybody else.
Uh, Mr. McCall, subject of Vegas, this letter, most of what, are we gonna do something on that, or we gonna have a...
Not today with my...
No, no, but I mean, are we gonna get on the agenda?
Right.
For, uh, uh, the, for, or...
The thirtieth.
Oh, we got time to get on there?
It's due next Monday.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay. So the saucework, you know, it's gonna be...
That the last one is just the full of fifty? Our total safety or last one?
I think so.
What do we call, what do we call that? Mosthead Road, or what, or what's that, on the agenda, what's it listed at?
Um...
Probably hasn't been posted yet, but I mean, what is, it's gonna be posted at half, I should say. I was just gonna write it down here, that's the thirtieth of...
What is the name of that? Is there a name of that road?
Well, there's, well, there's Mosthead Road, but this doesn't pertain to the road, this is a, this is just adhesion.
I don't think they're asking to be on the agenda about that. Have you read the letter?
Yeah.
Right, but that, that doesn't involve the county at this point. That's a private issue.
It's a civil issue.
Right. Um, and they haven't asked us to be on the agenda. I mean, uh, the couple that were, uh, here, but not that letter.
Oh, oh, no, they're coming in here on their, um, for, for the money they spent on that road to go on to their final approval part.
Yes, that is not that letter, and that is on the agenda already. I don't know the exact wording.
Uh, but I mean, on, on, on the Mosthead letter, though.
I think it's a civil matter. I don't think we can touch it. I think that, from what, as I read the letter and thinking about it, I think it's a civil matter between Mosthead and Jeff Stewart and Connor, or whatever his name.
Conrad, wasn't it?
Conrad, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that that's a civil matter between the four of them.
It's on the agenda, and the discussion is...
They got to complain against the county attorney for not coming in and taking action on it.
But we haven't seen that. Hathaway, that I'm aware of.
I don't, I don't, I don't...
If there is an action from, uh, you know, any other department on that, they need to...